I'll go ahead and call the meeting order, the Jackson County Board of Commissioner. Today, February fifteenth, two thousand and twenty-two. First item of business is the approval of the agenda. Are there any changes to the agenda? Hearing London, is there a motion to approve as presented? The agenda. Okay, is there a second? Any questions, discussion? All in favor, say aye.
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 All opposed, nay. Ayes, have it. Next is the approval of the minutes. We have one set from our February the first regular meeting. What's the pleasure of your board?
I move that we approve the minutes as presented.
Okay, is there a second? Any questions, discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. Ayes, have it. Chairman's report, I don't have anything to report today. It's good to have Commissioner Stripling back with us. And so I recognize him first today and.
I don't have anything to share with us.
Okay, all right. Just good to have you back. All right. Commissioner Jones?
I don't have anything.
Okay, Commissioner Woody?
Yes, I just want to give a heads up to anyone in our staff or also our community. The litter campaign task force, which the commissioner started, is gearing up for spring cleaning. Now, spring's not here yet, but as soon as it gets warm, we all start thinking about it. And so we're going to be, we had our G S person, Allison, make us a really nice map with all the different roads. And we're going to be looking at how we can be real comprehensive in our litter pickup in Jackson County. So just keep that on your radar. And if you want to participate, there'll be opportunity to do so.
Commissioner Deeds?
Nothing other than if you're up Skyland Drive before we get to our center up there on the right. Randy Kennedy, his crew, our other buddy that goes to Greenhouse, this is girlfriend.
Yes.
This is whatever. And so far, it looks really good. They're doing a real professional job building that something I left over there. Be doing to see like good use of that space out there.
Yeah, very good.
That's great.
Mr. Manager, you have a report today?
No, no formal report, but I do want to remind the board that we do have a budget retreat next Tuesday, February twenty-second. It will be at the University Center, the U C at W C U. Lunch will be served at noon and the meeting starts at one P M. The details about parking and everything, just look for information coming from Carrie, Carrie, talking to my assistant. And she'll provide you all the information that you need. We'll have some reserved parking spots there for you so that you won't have a problem getting into the facility itself. And we do have someone signed up for public comment, Mr. Chairman.
I don't think we had anybody signed up online, but we do have one in person here today. Recognize Mr. T J Walker from Dillsborough.
Who is this?
Mr. T J Walker.
You're not sleeping, Mr. Walker.
Our good friend from Dillsborough.
Nice to see you. I haven't been here in a while. My name is T J Walker. I live in the town of Dillsborough and operate the Dillsborough Inn. Want to thank you for your stewardship for Jackson County. My business has been blessed and has done very well since the pandemic has started. And, you know, attribute that partly to y'all and good stewardship. I am a member of the Jackson County Solid Waste Advisory Board, but I'm not here in that capacity. But I state so because I've had a career in environmental education, solid waste. Before I moved to Jackson County twenty-seven years ago, I was a recycling consultant and compost consultant and environmental educator. And we've, since my time on the advisory board, we built a system of S R Cs around the county. And I'm concerned with the disposition of the Dillsborough S R C. Basically, I really want to compliment you all on the new plan over there. The animal rescue, the plan to turn a park into the landfill. There's an issue with pedestrians. So what was our best S R C, our most popular and diverse with the different elements of the waste stream? I'm sure now you know it has to be moved. And however, the location of an S R C is very important. I don't know if you know it, but last few weekends, we've had a couple, one fatality and a major wreck in the expressway that flows through Dillsborough. And putting people, locals into directing them to a new S R C on the four forty-one corner corridor, I don't think is a wise decision. That current location, the old landfill, if you do an environmental impact study, historical impact study, cultural, social impact study. People, people like going there to do their recycling and go to the trash contractor. And there's a, there's an expression in that industry called true cost value. And I want you to consider, please, putting the next S R C at the base of that campus where the motor pool has been relocated. One impediment of the motor pool, they still have to go to Skyland Drive to fuel up. And that's, that's a lot of energy, time and necessity when the, that base, that location could, is enough room to put a new S R C. It's, it's have the blessing of the town of Dillsborough. Because it's a mile and a quarter from four forty-one corridor in Dillsborough, not a quarter mile, which was their objection before. But as a person who's been in the recycling, environmental education role, it just makes so much sense. Not to throw away that site, but have it inclusive to our community for people, encouraging people who've been going there all their lives to do, now do their recycling and source separation and cradle to grave, whatever they're bringing into the grave. Hopefully now it's more recycling. So it falls in line with the intention and being the recycling center for that portion of the county, for the town of Dillsborough. It makes more sense. I really like the employees of the Green Energy Park and the concept of that. And I thank you very much. I also want to support that and say that that's entry level job training for artists, for craft people. And I would like to see that be included in the town of Dillsborough more, more so. So please, when you're considering this decision, don't, don't rely on consultants from Asheville to tell you what needs to be done in Jackson County. Because people couldn't go into the landfill all their lives. And I think putting that in our S R C is throwing them a curve ball. Thank you.
Thank you, T J.
Thank you so much.
Okay, next we'll move on to our consent agenda. And first up is Ms. Fox, our finance director, who will present the finance report for January two thousand and twenty-two.
Good afternoon. I'll go over the highlights for the month of January. The general fund revenues collected to date, fifty-two million, eight hundred and sixty-two thousand, seven hundred and twenty-three dollars. That's seventy-two point twenty-seven percent of budget. The expenditures to date is thirty-nine million, five hundred and ninety-seven thousand, six hundred and sixty-five dollars. That's fifty-six point oh eight percent of budget. The revenues at this point are thirteen million, two hundred and sixty-five thousand, fifty-seven dollars, even the expenditures. The airborne taxes collected is at a hundred point six eight percent of budget at thirty-six million, nine hundred and ninety-eight thousand, three hundred and three dollars. The motor vehicle taxes, eight hundred and six thousand, five oh nine, which is fifty-four point eighty-nine percent of budget. The prior year taxes are at four hundred and fifty-one thousand, five hundred and fifty-two dollars. That's fifty point sixteen percent of budget. We received the sales and use tax distribution in an amount of one million, six hundred and sixty thousand, four hundred and sixty-three dollars for the month of January, which represented October sales. That amount is eleven point nine percent more than we received in January of two thousand and twenty-one.
October, yeah.
The Article forty-six distribution was a hundred and eighty-eight thousand, eleven dollars. And the average increase for the fiscal year at this point is thirteen point sixty-three percent.
And this, when you say the average for the fiscal year.
That's from July, from July sales through October sales.
From July through October.
Yeah. That's above last year's.
That's, that's wonderful, yeah.
The landfill disposal fees collected is two million, a hundred and four thousand, three hundred and fifty-eight dollars. That's ninety-five point forty-eight percent of budget. And the prior year landfill disposal fees is sixty thousand, two hundred and five dollars. That's a hundred and nine forty-six percent of budget. Also attached to my report is via Health Second Quarter Finance Report. Their revenues is two hundred and fifty-six million, five hundred and forty-two thousand, eight hundred and thirty-eight dollars. And their expenditures, two hundred and fifty-one million, two hundred and eighty-nine thousand, seven hundred and seventeen dollars. They had a net income less the risk reserve of two million, five hundred and seventy-two thousand, seven eighty-three. And operate, the operating cash at that point was a hundred and thirteen million, eight hundred and thirty-one thousand, four hundred and sixty-two dollars. And their spendable cash is thirteen million, three hundred and twelve thousand, nine thirty-five. The growth revenues, we're still seeing increases in them. All of the categories we're cracking are above the percentage where they should be for this time of the year. The general fund contingency balance at the end of January was one million, two hundred and fourteen thousand, eight hundred and forty-four dollars and thirty-one cents. Be glad to answer any questions.
I'll go sample, please.
Okay.
Please answer this for me. Motor, turn back to motor vehicle tag.
Okay. That's vehicle taxes that's collected when you register your tag?
If I go buy a brand new vehicle and I get a tag for it and I go down there and they give me a tag and then they, they.
They charge you taxes.
And then I pay the, for the tag and the taxes.
Correct, correct.
It's the taxes for a year for that new pickup that I bought.
Correct.
I'll never do it.
And then the state, the state sends the money back to us. The state sends the money back to us.
All right. I don't really like that pickup, so I sell it to a fellow a month later. And he has to go get a tag for it, correct?
Mm-hmm.
And he has to pay that tax on it. So the tax has been paid on it once. And now he's paying that tax again. And if he gets rid of the truck, that could, what is I'm worried about?
But normally.
Your very next person, your very next person is coming about to stand up will tell you the, the process to turn your tag in and to get your, you have to get a refund, basically.
You can get refunds.
Yes, yes. We do refunds once a month on those.
Refund to the first.
For the first person that had, that paid the tax.
But you have to come and ask for a refund.
No, the state processes those two. The state processes those two.
You do have to ask for it.
You have to.
You have to, y'all give you an F S twenty, I believe it's called, at D M V? And then you just give that to us and we'll do a preparation for the amount of months that you did not own the vehicle.
So you, you turn your tag in, so you have to, and then you get that form from, from the tag office. And then you have to take that form back to, is it Brandy's office?
Well.
Your office? To Tabitha's office and then they will process your refund.
And we do the checks back.
I just want to borrow it.
Well, you know my truck. If you own a new one, you have to see game. Anyway, I, well, I didn't realize how that happened and now I got to find it. That seems like sort of, it's the wrong time, term, but it's sort of like double jeopardy. Triple jeopardy, just keep jeopardizing.
Well, as long as, as long as you're vested, you're welcome. Any other questions? Okay, thank you.
Next is item two, the tax collector and refund report for January twenty-two.
Karen's doing this.
Glad to answer that, thanks, please.
Sherman.
Sherman.
Yes. Okay, good afternoon. For the two thousand and twenty-one taxes collected for the month of January, there was five million, one hundred and fifty-nine thousand, seventy-five dollars. The delinquent taxes collected were forty-eight thousand, nine hundred and sixteen dollars. The total deposited for the month of January was five million, four hundred and sixty-eight thousand, two hundred and seventeen dollars and twelve cents. For the month of January, there were refunds of one thousand, two hundred and seventy-five dollars and twenty-three cents. Overpayment refunds of eleven thousand, eight hundred and eighty-five dollars and eighty-one cents. And releases of a hundred and two dollars and fifty-nine cents. Any questions? Thank you.
Okay, thank you so much. We've now heard both reports under the consent agenda. What's the pleasure of the board concerning approval of both items?
I think we very much should approve both of them.
All right, I have a motion then, is there a second? Any other questions or discussions? Hearing none then, Madam Clerk, if you'd call the roll, please.
Commissioner Stripling?
Yes.
Commissioner Jones?
Yes.
Commissioner Woody?
Yes.
Commissioner Deeds?
Yes, ma'am.
Chairman McNamara.
Yes, motion carries. Next is our new business items, starting with number three, which is the audit contract with Martin Starnes and Associates CPA firm. Ms. Fox is also going to speak to this item.
Okay, Mr. Chairman, before we move on, I just want to point out for, for voice, but for the public too, that if they go and look at the tax office presentation, what Brandy puts behind her information is you see part of it is the overpayment of refunds. And there's very reasons why we give refunds, but this is the section where if somebody turned their tag in, you can see the amounts get pretty low, two fifty-six. You know, it's prorated by the months that you turn your tag in. So I just wanted to point out that, that for the public's knowledge and for the board's knowledge, once they go through that process, it'll eventually evolve back to, to this consent agenda in which the board does a consent agenda and the refunds are processed.
Thank you, sir.
Good, we, I didn't hardly realize some of that. Now, the rest of them may have, but.
Got the contract with Martin Starnes and Associates CPAs for the fiscal year and in June thirtieth of two thousand and twenty-two. And the contract amounts, ninety-three thousand, six hundred dollars. Be glad to answer any questions.
Any questions before we vote?
Just want to get a little cheaper.
Well, this is the third year they're proposing.
And they've done a great job.
They have, they have.
This has been a really good firm to work with.
Did their bid go up for this year?
No, it's the same.
Okay.
Do we have a motion to approve the contract?
I make a motion to approve.
Second.
And second has been authorized. Is there any other comments or questions? Hearing none, Madam Clerk, if you'd call the roll, please.
Commissioner Deeds?
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Woody?
Yes.
Commissioner Jones?
Yes.
Commissioner Stripling?
Yes.
Chairman McNamara.
Yes, the motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Fox. Next is item number four, which is the U D O amendments. You recall at our work session, we had a presentation, very lengthy presentation for Mr. Poston, our planning director, concerning the U D O amendments that are being proposed. And he's here today to officially request for a public hearing and offer some maybe additional comments. So Mr. Poston's floor is yours.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Not, not really any additional comments, just to be clear, what we're, what the amendments cover, the type of areas of ordinance, the U D O. We're talking about the pasture development regulations and some changes to that section nine point three. Talking about some amendments to subdivision section, Article five. We are proposing to put in multifamily development standards for those developments outside of our regulated districts, which would be in Article six development standards. And then we also have to change, add some additional information to our definition section, which is Article eleven. And then also add some procedural amendments in Article three. With that, I would formally request that the board consider hearing that, hearing those amendments and holding a public hearing on March first at five fifty-five P M. And, Mr. Chairman, I'm happy to answer any questions that the board may have.
I haven't had an opportunity to review this document and these proposed changes at a greater length since our last meeting. Has there been any questions that have come up among the board members that need to be clarified? If not, then would someone like to put forward a motion to call for a public hearing on March first at five fifty-five P M here in this boardroom?
Yes, go ahead, Mark.
Okay.
I'd go ahead and make that request for a public hearing.
Okay, so a motion's been put forth, is there a second? Any questions or discussion? Madam Clerk, if you'd call the roll, please.
Yes.
Commissioner Jones?
Yes.
Commissioner Woody?
Yes.
Commissioner Deeds?
Yes.
Chairman McNamara.
Yes.
Thank you.
Well, thanks, Mr. Mike, please.
Yes, sir.
I'd like to compliment on him, compliment him.
Let's move on then.
I'd like to compliment him, especially while he's always carrying stuff, take care of all these things, takes care of all of them, there's a lot of it.
Yes.
Of course, he kind of questioned when we hired him, if you remember.
Yeah, I remember very well.
Thank you.
Thank, well, thank you. And a lot of it's due to the staff that I have and the hard work they do. So it's not just me, but the staff as well. So thank you for that, I'll pass that along to them as well.
Yes.
Very good. Next is item five, which is the bond attorney engagement letter. This is something Mr. Adams highlighted at our work session as well. Mr. Adams?
So I believe numbers five and six, they're related before you is the bond engagement letter from Sanford Holzheiser Firm in order to hire them to be our bond attorney to proceed forward with, with the eventual sale of bonds related to the indoor pool. And this contract is an amount of thirty thousand dollars. And I believe they'll have to be voted on separately, so we'll handle this one initially.
Any questions concerning this engagement letter? Is there a motion to approve the engagement letter with Sanford Holzheiser?
I make a motion to approve it.
Okay, I have a motion, is there a second?
Second.
Any questions or discussion? Hearing none, Madam Clerk, if you'd call the roll, please.
Commissioner Deeds?
Yes.
Woody?
Yes.
Commissioner Jones?
Yes.
Commissioner Stripling?
Yes.
Chairman McNamara.
Yes, motion carries. Next, item six, the financial consultant engagement letter. Mr. Adams?
Yes, sir, as discussed before, the county needs to hire a financial consultant firm to help us with this, the bond process itself. So you have enclosed the engagement letter with Davenport in the amount of sixty-five thousand dollars.
Additional questions? All right, we've heard.
Yeah, I do.
Okay, all right, Mr.
Please, in a concise way, explain to me what, exactly what this is, what he's doing.
So that'll help us, they'll, they'll put together the entire schedule, a very detailed schedule of all the steps that need to take place. I think I mentioned to you, that's something our bond attorney usually helps us with also. But real specifically, what they're going to do is put together the information that we need to present to the rating agencies. We'll have to go to rating agencies to get a rating for Jackson County, like a triple A rating. These ratings are used when we go out to sell the bonds. And the better rating, the better financial rating that we have, then we're, when we go out to sell the bonds, it'll directly impact the, what's equivalent to an interest rate that we end up paying off on those bonds. So it really helps us to have a higher financial rating so that we lower our interest rate when we go to sell the twenty million dollars worth of bonds. So it's really important to have the assistance that we need. There's a whole set of information that just needs to be put together and has to be presented. They will be with us, with, with myself and, and the finance office and, and work through the L G C, the Local Government Commission, to help us get our financial rating. Now, if you read through all of this, they do a lot of other things that are going to help us. But at the end of the day, if you're asking me, what is the key, most important thing that they're doing for us? Is helping us get the financial rating that we need in order to sell. The whole schedule of this, we're anticipating a bid open date of, of June. We're looking at the sale in July, so you have to back up and to, to answer your question. So ultimately, it'll end up taking a couple of months process to put everything together and to go through the rating agencies. But we don't do that, we need to time it correctly to get closer to the sale of the bonds. And so that's why I can't sit here and tell you, we're going to do it in the next two months because we need to get closer to bid date. And then we really start getting specific on when we approach the rating agencies. When we get our rating, we, we, we can't wait a year to sell those bonds. We have to sell the bonds within a certain time period of those ratings to get advantage of it. So generally speaking, all of this will take, it's not a solid three months of work. It'll take several months from beginning to the end to finish up the process.
Any other questions, comments? All right, hearing none then, we have a recommendation to move forward with an engagement letter with Davenport Public Finance. What's the pleasure of the board?
I move that we accept this proposal.
Okay, we have a motion to accept, is there a second?
Second.
Any other questions or comments?
The two, item five and six, is the money going to come out of what fund? It won't be part of the twenty million.
It's part of the, yeah, it's part of the, the overall, when we present it to the public, all costs associated with the building. We present a two hundred and fifty thousand dollar number for closing costs. So ultimately, again, without getting, the twenty million dollar initial conversation with the public included two hundred and fifty thousand dollars of these types of costs. Now, I believe at the previous meeting, we were, we were hoping we were going to keep that down between two hundred and two twenty-five. But, you know, we were trying to plug in a month, a number, two and a half, or, or, you know, a year and a half ago. So we were trying to make. two and a half, or, or, you know, a year and a half ago, so we were trying to make sure we put in enough money. But yes, it'll be part of the whole financial package when we start talking about selling bonds and closing costs and all of that. Another way to look at it, it's not the same, but when, when you do a, a personal mortgage, you have all sorts of closing costs and, uh, and then they get wrapped up into the loan itself. Literally speaking, everything I told you is not exactly right. Essentially speaking, it's the same concept that we will wrap all these costs up into the closing cost and the sale of the bonds. Yep.
Any other questions or comments? Okay, we have a motion and a second then. Uh, Madam Clerk, if you'd call the roll, please.
Yes.
Commissioner Jones.
Yes.
Commissioner Woody.
Yes.
Commissioner Dietz.
Yes.
Chairman Mackman.
Yes, motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you. Now that brings us to our portion of the agenda considered old business. We do have one item. This is item number seven. This is the final offer for lots ten and eleven of the Mountain Vista Development. Ms. Baker, if you'd like to.
Hello. Um, so back in December, you may remember, I brought you two pretty large offers on our properties that we own through TAPs foreclosure. One was for twenty-four lots, um, that someone was offering to purchase. One was for eight lots, and so this is a good opportunity just for me to give you an update on those. Um, of the twenty-four lots, approximately of the twenty-four lots and of the eight lots, half of those, um, on each received no upset bids, and half of them did. So the ones that received no upset bids, I'm working on moving forward to closing. Some of those, um, people that made those offers are still involved in upset bids, who are waiting till the process runs out to close. Some of them are going ahead and closing on. So the ones that were upset, most of those are still ongoing. A lot of back and forth, people are doing minimum bids, so sometimes the upset bids only a hundred dollars over the original, so they may go on for a while. We'll, we'll see. But, um, this one has finished. There was no upset bid to this particular upset bid. This is an adjoining property owner of the lots in, um, ten-eleven Mountain Vista. Uh, this is the one that's a little far off Colway Mountain Road, around the back area there. You may remember, it's really steep. I think this is the one I showed you, that, that, um, contours was extremely steep. So this is an adjoining property owner that has made this final bid of thirty-three hundred. I think it was about twenty-five hundred was the original. I think he's got the amount there. I can't, I can't see it. Yeah, twenty-eight was the original bid. And so there has not been an upset bid to this. So at this point, I'm just looking for a motion to accept this final offer of thirty-three hundred, and he's ready to close and move forward. And then at some point, I'll be bringing those others back to you on, once they're finalized.
Do you recall how much the two lots combined tax record for those?
No, I, I can, I can pull that up and, and let you know later. It was, it was not a high amount. That, that, that is one, these, these lots were ones that we've owned for a long time. I think it was two thousand fourteen, thirteen or fourteen that we've owned. And because they are so steep, I think these were like the last two almost remnant lots out of a, a subdivision there that was done, but I don't remember the tax value.
Any other questions or comments concerning this? So what will we be voting on today?
To accept this final offer on lots ten-eleven Mountain Vista.
So you've heard the request that, uh, we move forward and accept the final offer on these two lots, ten and eleven of Mountain Vista. What's the pleasure of the board?
I'm glad we did so.
Okay, have a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, any questions or discussion? Not. Madam Clerk, if you'd call the roll, please.
Commissioner Dietz.
Yes.
Commissioner Woody.
Yes.
Commissioner Jones.
Yes.
Commissioner Stripling.
Yes.
Chairman Mackman.
Yes, motion carries. Next is our appointment section. We have one appointment item. This is under the Business and Industry Advisory Committee. This would be a vacancy, uh, with appointing coming from Commissioner Dietz for District Two. Do you have a name for today, sir?
Little girl.
I want a piece of paper in front of you.
Thank you. I think we may.
Good.
So then we? I'm getting old. Be glad. Ms. Nicole Owen.
Okay, Nicole Owen. You're putting that forward in the form of a motion then?
I am.
All right. Is there a second for this motion to appoint Nicole Owen as District Two Representative on Business Industry Advisory? We do have need for closed session for real property. Is that correct, Mr. Adams?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Which is one forty-three, three eighteen, eleven A five. Do I have a motion to go into closed session concerning real property?
So moved.
All right, is there a second?
Second.
All in favor of saying aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay. T J., thank you for. TJ? Go ahead and call the meeting back to order. Announce that we only took action in closed session to approve the closed session minutes. We do have need for one additional business item today. So I'd ask for a motion to amend the agenda, to add an additional item, item number nine. Be a new business item, purchase of real property. Would the, someone like to put that forth in a motion?
Amend the agenda.
Okay. We have a motion to amend the agenda.
Number nine.
Okay. Is there a second?
Second.
Any question or discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. Okay. What we have is, Mr. Adams, you can put something on the screen there?
Yes, sir.
Okay. What we have, our staff has been evaluating some property in the Koala Community, Whittier area. It's adjacent to Smoky Mountain Elementary School. We have the pin numbers, and I'm going to read these out. It's three tracks, all owned by the same family. These properties are located at the intersection of Sunset Farm and Beck Branch, and the county is wishing to move forward and enter into a contract, extend an offer to purchase for these three tracks in the amount of $400,000. Would someone like to put that in the form of a motion to offer that, offer to purchase?
I would like to put that into a motion, Mr. Chairman.
Okay. All right. Commissioner Stribling has moved that we move forward with this offer to purchase. Is there a second?
Second.
Any questions or discussion?
I do, I do want to point out that, and it may be just good for the public and for the record, that the purpose of this, this, the purchase of this property is to evaluate, to move forward with it to be a pocket park in the Koala and the Whittier area. And that is, that is the primary reason that the county has been searching and looking for property in that community and area. Specifics of the park and details of what eventually ends up there, gets built there, is going to be subject of further conversations amongst this board and recreation staff and others.
Thank you, sir. Any other comments or questions?
Would it be prudent to let the school board know about this purchase so that they can maybe be looking down to, have the ability to look down the future?
Yes, it will. We'll make sure they know that this has become public, but I can tell you that there have been internal conversations with school staff, with leadership at the school system. And so they, their leadership has been aware that we have been, they've been aware, we've been looking at trying to expand this park up in here and try to just expand services in that community. And they're also aware that we were interested in looking at properties that were adjacent to them. So I think after you vote today, we'll just notify them that this now has become a public conversation.
Also, I guess, Ms. Baker, I need to clarify on the motion that includes the me, having authorized this chair to sign.
Councilor.
Yes, sir. So would you offer that in the motion as well, Ms. Stribling?
Yes, sir. Yes, sir.
All right. Any other questions or comments? All right. Having heard no more, Madam Clerk, if you'd call the roll, please.
Mr. Deeds?
Yes.
Commissioner Woody?
Yes.
Commissioner Jones?
Yes.
Commissioner Stribling?
Yes.
Chairman McMahon?
Yes. Motion carries.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you, sir. Any other business to come before the board? If not, do I have a motion to adjourn?
Make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
Second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.